Good to know. All right, everybody, it's 5:45. Welcome, welcome. Let's see, it is May 3rd. We are doing our Committee of the Whole. All council members are present. Fantastic. First thing on the agenda today is approval of the minutes. Any corrections, concerns with the minutes from the Committee of the Whole, April 5th? If not, I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes from April 5th, 2022.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, aye. I forgot to vote. All right, those are approved. We've got two discussion items this evening. Power Department report by Blaine Hackey, and he has half an hour. Hi, Blaine.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Kat. I'll need the five-minute warning. Jennifer, are you going to give me the five-minute warning? Because I can use more than 30, but we'll see if we can keep you guys away. First of all, I want to compliment the mayor on his shirt today.
Don't admit that.
Deflate my ego. I did. Welcome to the two new council members. Haven't met you, Gary, but I know you Pam pretty well, but welcome. And hopefully, we'll be able to give you a little insight today in the Power Department and the value, I think, to the Power Department is to the city. This 30-minute report will cover a couple of things that I think are pretty important for the council to know about. I think I'm going to talk about four things if I can squeeze it in at seven minutes apiece. One is to cover the summer load. I'm going to try to explain how we're going to cover our resource load because this summer is going to be hot and it's going to be issued with drought and natural gas pricing that's out of whack. And so I think I want to allay some of your fears on what we've planned on doing for the summer. Number two, I'd like to talk about the IPP power plant out in Delta. There's some major things happening out there with new construction and Marie is a big entitled owner of that power plant, and I think it'll be interesting to give you an update on that. Number three, there are other projects we're looking at through the UAMS group. The large-scale solar project, and there's some other projects that I think will be interesting that we're looking at. And the last one would be some employee issues, just a general health report of how the Power Department's doing. So those are the four items I think we can talk about. First one was how we're going to cover our 2022 summer load. And to help you understand, part of this is going to be review. I want to go over each of our resources that we have, our portfolio, so you understand where we're going to buy our power from. We can't generate it all here in Murray, although we will use our gas turbines quite a bit. The first one, the resource is the Colorado River Storage Project. We call that the CRISP project. That's the federal hydro. That's the, basically, it's Lake Powell, Glen Canyon Dam, but there are other dams on the Colorado River drainage that also produce power for this. You've seen it in the news the last little while, how the drought's causing the bathtub ring of Lake Powell to go lower and lower or higher and higher, whichever way you look at it. Last reports we heard were 35 feet from sucking air into the hydro intakes. And when we start sucking air, we can't generate electricity with air. The reports we're hearing is that for this summer, we'll probably be okay because of the increased flows coming from Flaminge Gorge. And there's two other dams, Navajo and Blue Mesa, I believe, that are increasing their flows into Lake Powell so that that remains high enough that we're able to continue to generate power. Millions of people rely on that energy. Murray is one of them. About 25% of our energy comes from Lake Powell. It used to be around 30 to 35%, but as years have gone by, they've divvied up the pie, the generation pie into different sections. And as more municipals come on in system, I'm talking decades of length, they'll take slivers of energy from the existing customers. So anyway, the long story short, about 25% of our energy comes from Lake Powell. We're already seeing about 40% decrease in generation this year, and we're paying 14% more for that energy. So paying more for less. And that's what's happening to all the customers in the western region. We've all got to do our part, and that's the way the federal government has divvied up our assignment, I guess you could say. The federal government's a little bit worried about the fact that there's not as much revenue coming in for power sales. And so they have begun to talk about how they're going to keep funding Glen Canyon Dam and the CRSP project without that resource of kilowatt-hours coming in. There is a nest egg that they can rely on with hundreds of millions of dollars that they're going to probably supplement so that the Glen Canyon Dam tenders can still get paid, even though there's not as much money. It's simplifying it, I know, but the federal government is not only worried about the lack of generation, but also how they're going to pay for the fixed costs of the plant. If there's any questions as we go along, maybe we can move it because, well, anyway. Number two is the Hunter Power Plant. That's the coal plant out in Price. We have, it's been steady. It's been a good resource. We've had it since the 80s. It's mortgage-free. I mean, it's paid for, we have no debt. We just pay for the coal and the O and M costs on that. We expect that to be 100% this summer. About 30% of our load comes from Hunter. 30% from that, one power plant, 20 to 25% from the federal government resource. The third plants are the landfill methane plants we have here in the valley. We have a contract with Trans Jordan Landfill, as well as Salt Lake County Landfill, to purchase the power from the methane that they capture from the garbage. And they run and purify the methane and put them through Caterpillar engines. It's a good, it's a green resource. We get green credits for it because we're using methane, which is an ozone-depleting gas, and we're making electricity with it. We're the only ones in the state to have that. We've had it since, well, about 15 years in one case, and we have, it's a good resource.
Do we, can you talk about how we use it? Do we use?
Yeah, we actually transmit it into the city through two power lines, one from Trans Jordan and one from Salt Lake County. It's about a seven-and-a-half-megawatt plant, which is about 6% of our needs comes from the landfill, and that's a green resource. We have green credits, meaning we could sell credits to other people that want the credits, or we can keep them for our own use.
Do we sell any of the credits?
We do sell credits, some of the credits to California. They have much stricter guidelines in Utah does, and we have an agreement with Truckee Donner, which is a public power utility in the Lake Tahoe area. They are members of UAMS, and they approached us several years ago and said, "Right now, Murray, you don't need the components to get through your portfolio. We don't have as strict a profile or portfolio. How about you sell us them until the time comes when you need them?" And that's the case we have resolved, is we will continue to sell those for a pretty good profit, and I'll catch you offline on that. In the case that we do need the components for our own, we will call it back and use them for ourselves. Good question. The fourth item is the Cottonwood Hydro, which is a small hydro at the base of Little Cottonwood Canyon. We're having some issues with that one, as we've talked about with the council before. We are having some issues with the structural part of the hydro. We're seeing some cracking in the concrete. We're seeing some issues with the bearings overheating. And the big issue is there's a two-and-a-half-mile pipeline that leads from the mouth of the canyon underground to where the hydro facility is. And we've done some maintenance on that, and the maintenance by the contractor wasn't done correctly. And so we're having to go back in and find out what caused it and why it happened. In the meantime, we can't put water in the penstock. The penstock is the pipe. It's a 48-inch pipe, so we will get no production out of the Cottonwood Hydro this year. Luckily, we're not going to miss a lot of production because there's not a lot of snow up there, but nevertheless, we're not going to see any production. Usually, about 2% to 3% of our energy comes from Cottonwood Hydro. And we're going to find other ways to find that energy, and I'll explain that here in just a second. Yes, Mayor?
That's a question. Would you guys be interested? Because I've heard so much about this, I want to go up. Would you be interested in going up there? Okay.
Yeah, Pam, I remember.
I mean, it's a massive thing.
Yeah, there's, yeah, the Navajo solar panel, as well as the coal plants are pretty interesting too. Thanks, Mayor. There'd be a two-part, we can take you up where the intake is, where we catch the water in the hydro, in the creek, and then we'll catch it two-and-a-half miles down where we catch it. It's a fascinating process, so. Number three is the San Juan Coal Plant. It's located in Farmington, New Mexico. About 2% of our energy comes from the San Juan Coal Plant. Now, this is a coal plant that was mainly owned by California, and because of the stipulations on Sacramento, the California entities that owned that have dropped out of the plant, and that was expected to be demolished or shut down this month. That was going to go kaput. And so Californians have backed out, but because of the situation, the dire situation of the summer, FERC, the owners of the plant, Public Service of New Mexico and, I think, Farmington City, asked FERC if they could run through the summer. And FERC agreed that they would let them run through the summer to get us through these hot months and the load problems that we're expecting this summer. So we will get production through the end of September and then that will end.
Did they change the way that they're going to repurpose that plant?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that thought, okay? Yeah, you're exactly right. Unless you want to skip to that, Boober?
No, it's okay. I was wondering why California would pull out, but that would be anyways, yeah.
It's for the same reason why they've walked away from the IPP plant. They can't bring coal-produced kilowatt-hours across California state lines. It's just mandate Sacramento. So because this is coal-fired, you can't go across the lines. But they are refurbishing that plant for a possible other purpose that Marie might be involved with. So hold on to that for five minutes. The other one is IPP plant. I told you, the Delta Power Plant. We have entitlement and ownership in that plant since the 80s. We have a great agreement with Los Angeles Department of Water Power where they will pay for the plant, lock, stock, and barrel, O and M, and mortgage. And when we want to call it back or reserve power from them for our own use, we just give them a phone call, generally speaking, and say, "We want to buy some power." That's an agreement where they pay our rent, they pay everything, and at the end of the contract, they give us the keys to the car and walk away. And there's no other contract I know in the country where you can own a plant and have somebody else pay for it. And when you want it, you can get it. And that's based on economics. It's kind of an expensive plant for the Utah market. So LA and the other Californians involved graciously and gladly will take the IPP energy because it's cheaper for them because their rates are twice ours. They have more of a customer base they cover. It's expensive for us, but not expensive for California.
And what, how does that produce power?
It's coal.
That is coal. And so they are taking coal?
They're taking coal up until 2025, or a little bit longer.
And how much of our power load do we get from that?
Well, some years, zero. Some years on economics, we don't call back. We call the callback. We don't call back anything. This year, we're calling back 19 megawatts.
And how much would that be?
That would be, let me come out real fast. It would be about 20%.
Okay, so we have 25% coming from Lake Powell, 30% from the Hunter Power Plant, 6% from the landfills, 2% from San Juan, and 20% from IPP.
Yes.
Okay.
What does that tally to?
We're getting there. We're getting there. It was like we're going down, down.
I'm going to fudge the numbers a little bit.
Oh, you're good.
No, we've still got a couple of resources to talk about. Let's see, I think that's all I'm going to talk about that one. It's an expensive resource, but the key to that is we can call it back. We're calling it back this summer because we expect the loads during the summer peak are going to be high. They're going to be higher than IPP, and so we would be forced into buying high-energy peak power. So as a, to allay the fact we're going to be reliant on the market, we are going to buy our entitlement back from IPP. Many people in the state wanted it. Most of the cities in the state, UAMS organization, are really worried about this summer because of the drought, because natural gas prices are just going bonkers, and a lot of the production is a general relation from natural gas to the energy market. Gas goes up, prices of power go up, and they come flip-flop back and forth sometimes. So we were approached by several UAMS members to call back power for them because they didn't have enough for their own needs. And we called back as much as we could for our own marine needs and just didn't have enough to call back them, for them on their behalf. And we would have gladly done it had we had a little more notice. We could have called back more and maybe sold it for a little bit of a profit, but this would have been a call that would have been made 18 months ago to call back for the summer. I know it's very confusing, I'm sorry, but the callback is kind of a confusing situation, but suffice it to say, it's a great agreement for us because we've always got that power plant in the back of our pocket, in our quiver, quiver in our arrow in our quivers. Well, we don't have to even pay for it if we don't want to, and that's the beauty of it. Okay, let's talk about our gas turbines. They're located at 48 South Second West, the back street of my offices. We have three units that are 11 megawatts apiece, that's 33 megawatts. They are ready for our summer needs. We have given our staff the direction, those puppies will run because it's really going to help us.
That would be another good thing for the council since, you know, we have so many new that have never seen those turbines, and they're, it's pretty interesting.
It's amazing, they're about the size of, well, a jet engine. They're basically three jet engines strapped to concrete pads where they are. And while we do that, Diane, maybe we can take you up into our dispatch area where we can show you how we buy and sell power on the hour.
Right. That's really interesting.
It's really just a click of the button with a mouse, but it's kind of interesting to see the process, and we can walk you through how we troubleshoot an outage and those types of things. So we'll have a sleepover. We're going tours.
And so I assume those gas turbines will make up the delta, the remainder of what is needed, is that right?
We're close.
Okay.
We're going to rely on the market.
Well, because you said 30 megawatts, and you earlier said 12 meg, or 90 megawatts, made up about 20%, so that's got to be well over 20%.
Yeah, we're not going to run the turbines every hour of the day, though.
And why is that?
Because, because the energy cost of the turbines, we can't run the turbines from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM because we don't need it. Our customer load goes down, we shut the turbines down, 9 o'clock the next morning, we start one up. We could run straight through the night, we'd just be generating into, into nothing. We get nothing for our energy. So they'll be on 60% of the time versus 100% of the time, like IPP would be on 100% of the time.
Okay. And so from a sustainability perspective, CRISP and the methane plants are the two that we get that are basically, we call green energy, is that correct?
Yes, yes. And we'll talk about a future resource, a big solar array down in the Navajo area that is set to be on here in the next little while as well. So we're ready to run our gas turbines. Now, the good thing about gas turbines is that we bought power, we bought gas back in November at $4 a decotherm. Keep that $4 in mind. Gas right now is $7 a decotherm. We're pre-purchased enough generation for about 12 hours of the day, all three turbines, for July, August, and September. If we had waited through the market, it would have been 75% higher. So kudos to my staff for realizing that and not buying too much or too little because you, you know, if the market would have gone down to $3 instead of $4, then we would have a different type of scrutiny. So we figured that by not buying gas at $7 and we bought it at $4, it's going to be about $800,000 savings to the city just for the fact that we played the natural gas market. So, so that's going to be pretty interesting. Now, what we're trying to do is we're trying to generate for around, see, $4 a decotherm gas, we're going to generate a $70 a megawatt-hour, and we're going to try to avoid buying $250 megawatt-hour on the market. So 250 is our goal to beat, and it could go up to 500. We're not sure what's going to happen this summer, but we can generate a 60. Now, if we have to generate, Gary, if you have to generate during the middle of the, in the night, we're going to have to buy the $7 gas. We've only ordered enough $4 gas for our peak, but we don't expect that to run during the 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Now, other UAMS members have approached us and said, "We need some energy, even if it's 3:00 in the morning." So we may strike a deal with them, and if they'll cover the cost of the $7 gas, we'll mark it up a dollar and a quarter, we can make a little bit of profit. And our staff wants to do that. They want to run the turbines 24/7 because it's better for maintenance. My mechanic, Paul Doran-Sorrow, he gives me heartburn every year because, Blaine, you're starting them at 9:00 in the morning, you're shutting them off 11:00 at night. And then because of the metal fatigue on the, it hurts his, it hurts his engines, it hurts his turbines. And so this year, we're going to try to make a situation where he can run one or two mega, one or two turbines through the night, maybe if we have enough market, and he'll be, he'll be, he'll be happy with that. So that's kind of, it's a complicated situation, but I think we've got it. Okay, the top percentage, Gary, whatever that percentage on the top is, 15% or whatever, we're going to play the market. The market is $250 or higher, and that makes wise business sense to us because we don't want to buy a chunk of power at the top end that we have to keep 24/7 because we only use it for two or three hours a day. And so we'll spike it and buy the $500 stuff and say, "Phew, I'm glad we didn't buy a block." Diane?
And that's so interesting to observe that while it's happening. Where they have those big screens and how they're buying power and so aware of that and what you have to be aware of. I mean, I just think it's fascinating.
We hope we're ready for the summer. I'd like to say we're 100% ready. We're not ready because in 2001, the Enron situation took over, and we paid close to $1,000 a megawatt-hour, when it's usually 60. That was the situation that took place back then. Murray went through around $3 million a month on power bills back then. We dipped into our reserves, $6 to $7 million that we hadn't really expected because of the gouging of the market and the situation that was happening there. Could that happen this year? I hope not. But artificial outages like happened back then with pseudo-sales and that, it might happen, but I hope not. So that's my report on the summer. Knock on wood, we're going to make it through. Let me talk about the IPP project. As I mentioned before, because of the coal situation, yeah, coal situation with California, after 2025, they can't bring coal-produced energy into the state of California. So years ago, LA, that still wants the plant because a third of the energy that LA County uses comes from that plant in Delta, Utah. They couldn't just afford to stop that plant. So the solution was with the IPA, Intermountain Power Agency Agreement, was that they would demolish or get away with the coal plant to build a natural gas plant right next to it. And that's what they're doing. We're building a natural gas plant. Once that's built in 2025, they'll tear down the coal plant with tears in our eyes. I mean, really, it's a sad situation because it's a great plant, it's, at least in my eyes. Someone, it's one of the cleanest plants in the country, and we're waiting, we're walking away from the plant after the mortgage is paid. But that's the only way we could keep it because it's too big of a plant for Utah by itself to keep going. We have to have the partnership of LA. So we're building a plant next to it. We've already spent a couple hundred, we, I say IPA, which is Murray, which is LA, has already spent hundreds of millions of dollars towards that plant. And just last week, we signed an $800 million bond in New York City that will take care of the first year and a half of construction for that plant. I was involved with that bond sale, and it's fascinating to see how that worked, and I appreciate the opportunity to see that as a board of directors on the IPA. It was oversubscribed by six times, which means it was very popular with Wall Street. They liked IPA's group, and the $800 million was easily raised in, well, in two hours. And so we signed, we signed that off. There was a signature I was shaking my hand on, I had to sign it, and it wasn't out of my own pocket, of course, but $800 million is quite a bit. Yeah, the plant's going to cost 1.2 billion when it's over. And California is also upgrading its substations on both ends of the 500-mile DC transmission line to the tune of 1.3 billion, I think. So it's about $2.5 billion project. The original plant back in 1980 was 4.5 billion, but it was for a bigger plant. So we're talking big, big money. Murray's not going to pay for any of that. LA and the other two cities from California are going to be paying for all the construction costs. The only way we would pay for that is if we were to call back power after 2025, and that's a possibility. But then as part of our power cost for June of 2028 or whatever, part of that would be the mortgage or the mortgage fixed cost. So no harm, no foul to Murray. If we never call back in kilowatt-hours from IPP, it's all better. We can just know that that's in our back pocket for the rest of our lives. How we doing, Jennifer? Okay.
Quick question on that. So instead of retrofitting the coal part, they're just adding another facility?
Right.
Okay.
A facility right next to it.
That ended up being the solution to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then they would actually take the, dismantle the boilers and all that, smokestacks one by one. Now, the key part to that was, is that they're going to have a hydrogen-producing plant next to this plant. And so it's going to be a mix of natural gas. We're, we are building the natural gas plant. California is seeing this as another environmental kudo, kudo, I guess. And they're going to actually have a hydrogen-making facility right next to the existing plant, and they're going to push the hydrogen into the salt caverns that are underneath the plant. There are six caverns underneath the IPP plant, just coincidentally placed, that are about the size of the Empire State Building. And they're going to shove the hydrogen in there, in two of them, and then the hydrogen will be produced through water electrolysis, I think it's called. And they're going to use renewable energy to run the electrolysis process, wind and, they call it green hydrogen. And so the green hydrogen will make the hydrogen that will be in the cavern, and then they will bring the hydrogen up and mix it with the natural gas in the turbines through the years. In 2025, they expect that mix to be 30% hydrogen and 70% natural gas, and by 2045, they expect it to be 100% hydrogen. This is a huge-scale hydrogen that has been done in the world yet. But they think they can do it, and this is, this makes it more palatable to Los Angeles to have a hydrogen mix because even natural gas is not looking super clean in California. They're, you know, it's pretty clean, but, so with the hydrogen mix, the city council and the mayor of LA and the other have really bought off on this. So we're going, we're going to go ahead. We're not paying for the hydrogen part of it. We're paying for the natural gas part of it, and LA's paying for all the rest of it.
But once that's up and running, that will be much cleaner than the coal plant that currently exists there.
It'll be, yeah.
Because you mentioned it's the cleanest coal plant, but this is a huge step.
Zero, zero sit, zero pollutant, yep. All right, let me skip ahead to what I think you might want to be, let's see. Let's talk about the Red Mesa Project. That's the solar plant down in the Navajo Tribe. It's a five-megawatt array, photovoltaic array out on the red, red dirt of, near, it's on the Utah side of the Navajo Reservation. That was supposed to have been completed this month, but because of, they say, COVID labor issues and issues from China on products and blah, 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 that's been changed to November of this year. So that'll be up and going in November. We have five megawatts of that. It's a large-scale solar. Man, we could have used that this summer. We really could have used that this summer, and it's unfortunate that it's not happening. The pricing of that's in the $25 megawatt-hour range, which is really cheap, but we don't have it 24 hours a day. Of course, that's the up and the downside of solar. Any questions on that one? Okay, we're ready to go on that one. That's being built right now. Two, three minutes? Okay. Would you rather answer question, ask questions, or do you want me to keep going?
Employee issues.
Well, employee issues, don't have any huge employee issues. We have, I wanted to mention, though, we have six people in our apprentice programs. We have four, we have, actually, we have more than that. We have four linemen in the apprentice program. The apprentice programs usually are four years, and they need to have on-job training hours as well as they go to school after hours. It's kind of like a after-hour college degree, might way, might say. We have four linemen, just young guys, just excited to get into the field. We have two substation techs that are in the apprentice programs, and we have two meter people in the apprentice program. This is the most apprentices we've had in a long time, eight of them. And it's good to see the enthusiasm they bring in because I've got some veterans that are, that are my age, ready to walk over the hill and off wherever we go. What happens when we walk over the hill? You just kind of walk over. But we have a good mix of young and old, and our guys are really excited. I have one guy out on meniscus tear. He had a non-job accident. He has an arbrist, and he had a big log that was well beyond his means, and he tore his he's an arborist and he had a big log that was well beyond his means and he tours meniscus, carrying a log to so he's he's out on light duty. Um other than that, um we're doing well. I like to think we're hap, we're 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 a fat and ha, fat and happy group. We're we're happy. We're happy. We're happy. And um let me tell you about the outages. We had six outages last month in April. Uh six is all in the entire city. We had eleven the month before. And the longest outage was seventy one minutes and our response time to outages is around eighteen minutes in the last two months. That's pretty good response time. Of course, a lot of that's during the regular workdays. But if we have an after outage, we have guys that are within, you know, thirty minutes of response. So I like to think our reliability is good. We got to get rid of the squirrels though. They're causing a lot of outages. Right, Kat? You, did you talk to your kids about the squirrel outages before?
My kids yell raccoon like every time.
All right. All right. We invite you to our Arbor Day celebration this Friday at noon. And um with that, thanks for opting to be here. It's been several months since I've been here. So thanks.
Thank you.
Helped you out a little bit, I understand.
Excellent information.
Just quickly, I have one more thing. Thank you very much for hosting me at APPA in Washington DC. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate your escorting me to to all of our uh national representatives who actually showed up.
All and did.
I know. And you know, that just doesn't happen very often. And thanks for the pictures. They were absolutely horrible of me and lovely of everyone else. But anyway, I just want to express my appreciation for that.
There's some value to being seen back there. All six showed up.
I know.
Some stayed for a half hour. And usually we don't see one or two of those. They send their staff and that's it.
Maybe an election year for.
Could be.
Anyway, thank you.
Thanks for taking the time. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Chief Burnett and Mark Richardson talking about Salt Lake Valley Public Order Unit Memorandum of Understanding.
Can I just say Mark helped draft the resolution, but he's not gonna be present. That'll be Chief Burnett presenting.
Thanks, Jill.
We'd probably rather see Mark, but.
Happy to see you, Chief.
Thanks. Now, what uh what what we're looking at is uh we've been asked uh to be, take part of a of a this public order unit. Now, what a public order unit is, is uh specially trained, equipped uh officers who can respond to situations where there are how do I want to put this politely? What what where there's where there's issues with with mass uh uh whether it be uh demonstrations or uh concerns of uh of some kind of a civil unrest. Uh something that we looked at and we had back in around the early two thousands as we prepared for the Olympics and then that kind of went away. Uh but uh has now come back forefront. And so it it's been uh, I think it was looked at by uh by all the agencies. This is something that we need to have that people are we're part of the, by by joining this, it's meaning that we could participate, whether that means we put a couple of officers in one of the teams. Uh but at the very least, if we had an issue and we needed some help uh beyond what we could handle, we could uh, we'd be part of this uh unit where we could call and and request some help. Currently, the state of Utah has a team, uh Salt Lake City has a team, West Valley has a team. We're and now we're looking at uh starting up, I believe, two other teams that would take into account all of the uh the other agencies in the valley. We're not big enough, nor do we have the need uh to put that kind of money or time and resources into it that uh some of the bigger cities do. Uh but we would, if we if we were, went through this, we would probably have two or three that would go through the training. It it's important to know that they have the, they have the uh the training first and foremost as to what they're going to do, what they don't do. Uh you know, how to how to respond, how not to respond and have the proper uh equipment uh to protect themselves and uh and the public that when they're there. So that's that's essentially what we're looking at is just being allowed to uh to join this uh Salt Lake Valley Regional Public Order Unit with uh being able to pu- pull on those resources and to put in whatever we feel we could uh that we need or would want to or could afford to uh to be part of this. It's something that rarely, if ever, is used, but when it is, it's it's good to have the resources.
It's always good to have friends.
That's really what this is about. It's 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 we're all signing up to be each other's friend.
So as we think about the demonstrations that happened um summer ago, that would be though it was those officers, we would be part of that potentially helping control those demonstrations and clear streets and that sort of thing.
Called and if we were brought up to that. And the the point with that is making sure that those who are responding to those type of incidences have been through the proper training.
Know how to handle it.
They know how to handle it. They know what to do, what not to do. You know, so there's, there's a lot here that's, the the big factor here is the training.
Would there be in a situation where more than two to three officers would be trained?
Well.
In case that more officers had to be called?
Yeah, there there's, there's two levels. Uh there there's the the initial level, I think they call them level one, but they they're the ones that would be the the, they're out in the front. They're they're the, they're the they're the more trained, more equipped. Uh and then there's the the next level, which kind of falls on about everybody and it and that one's called a mobile field force where we just make sure they have some equipment. They're there, they're in the back should there be additional needs. But you know, we could probably put whatever we wanted into. This is very expensive. I mean, to to put one person in there, the equipment alone is over ten thousand dollars. So we're.
So we buy the equipment and everything.
Yeah, this just says we're joining. This doesn't, we're not, we pay, we pay our so if something comes up and we we need to send somebody to go be part, whatever team they're say we join this, they're part of a team and and their team gets called up.
Yeah.
We pay, there are people, we pay we pay their equipment, we pay their their salary.
So they don't go into some pool where all this equipment isn't put the equipment on?
Nope. So if we.
That would be a, you could pitch that idea.
Well, if we could find that money somewhere, that would be awesome.
Central repository of equipment across all the members.
So that, you know, for the other uh the other people, we do have a a bunch of stuff that we would just hand out as needed. But for those that are part of this team, it's specialized. We want to make sure they have the right training and and equipment. But if we were to call because we had an issue here, uh they would send their teams here and we're not paying for them. So like I say, it's just a memorandum of understanding, kind of like the fire department calling in other units from another city to help out or what we would do on other incidences. So just something we haven't been involved with uh up until now.
But this just commits us to joining that. It doesn't necessarily say how many officers we're going to include in this.
We really don't have to put anybody in there.
But you'll be coming back with an ask for that then, I assume, on how many officers we want to get trained because that's a budget request or no?
Well, some of that we will just, as we progress, we have some money that we have been trying to get some uh equipment. Problem is, there's like one vendor and that's not going very well. So we're a ways out from pulling up that kind of money and
Okay.
most of that either we'll use some of our CIP or we find uh use some of our other equipment that's in our budget. But yes, should we have more, we would definitely need to ask for more money because it's, it is spendy.
It looks like quite a group of people or agencies that are involved.
Yeah, it's every, everyone in Salt Lake County and Utah and Davis County are asking to become part of this as well. So it it and if you remember two years ago, we had, when Salt Lake City needed help, they had people from Davis County and as far away as Ogden that were coming down. So we're just looking at trying to not have to be in the situation or somebody doesn't have to be in the situation that that happened before.
Yeah.
Be ready.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, that is all we have on the agenda for Committee of the Holes. If there's no objections, we are adjourned until our council meeting at six thirty.